It's called a meeting to order. Ben will be absent this evening. Item two, I'm sorry, to get the roll. Item two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session and agenda of October 17th, 2017.
Bill, I've got a couple items here on the claims list that I've looked for just information about. Form 10, accounting, there's an item there, AON Consulting, Inc., Workers' Comp Reserve Report, $7,750. What exactly is that?
That's a fee that we pay to our actuary to do the actuarial workers' comp report that's required by the auditor. What they'll do is they'll go in and look at all the claims we have, they actuarially determine the liability estimate that we in turn have to use to record that liability. We had to start doing that about maybe four years ago, and so that you could attribute that to another audit cost.
Okay, well, the audit cost is fierce enough as it is.
Is that an annual audit?
Yes, that's an annual requirement on that actuarial report.
But if we wanted to look at this, we could look at the audit report, and it'd be in there.
No, it wouldn't be in the audit, well, it wouldn't be in the audit report, it's a separate report, but the numbers that it gives, the liability numbers would be in the audit report.
But they don't just plug this into the audit report.
They plug the liability numbers out of it, but you're welcome to look at it, it's an open record document.
I'm not that interested. Again, Form 10 and the information technology, there's a Tri-Bridge Holdings Annual GP Smart List Green Shade for $25,643.89.
That sounds like our annual support, is that what that is there?
Yes, that's for our financial, HR, all our software.
Oh, all of our software, the support through your partners or Tri-Bridge?
Yes.
Okay.
We get that from Tri-Bridge Holdings, huh?
Yes, they are who provide our software support for multiple systems, Great Plains, and apparently one of the HR systems, it sounds like, and what other systems is that?
That's it.
It's just, we pay this fee every year?
Yes, for support and a software license.
Okay. Form 22 golf, CXT, Inc., prefab Restrooms, $41,209.
These are the restrooms, you remember that we were in the budget for last year that were encumbered, we ordered them, and they've been delivered now, they're prefabricated. There's two of them, they're single vault, I believe, and they replaced the ones, was it the ninth hole, women's?
The ones that were all falling apart?
That was destroyed.
Are they up?
Yes, they are up.
Okay, I haven't been out there in a while, I guess I need to go out and look at them.
Yeah.
I did notice that the porta potty had disappeared back there on the back nine.
That's why, that's why, we no longer need the porta potty.
It's a lot cheaper than building them.
But they're up and operating?
Yes.
Okay, very good. That's all I had, Mayor.
Anyone else? Item three, discussing Willow Road Bridge Repair, Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner, City Manager, just do a quick presentation on the, what's going on with repair and the needs for repair from the Willow Road Bridge, which is, is, the bridge is located on Willow Road, just west of 66th Street. You recall, we have 66th Street under construction, it is pretty well paid for, but we have the intersection work yet to do on Willow and Chestnut and 412 and that project. Want to point out, bridge location here, we also Pioneer Schools on Willow Road, just west of the bridge site. Okay, we actually, this bridge was inspected two years ago, and was, you know, bound to be in operational condition. We actually, recall, we had a deck failure last year and did repair on the deck, but the bridge inspection this year shows these, this is on the west bent of the bridge, and you can see these are the steel piles, and they've been completely eroded over the last two years where they're unacceptable. So the bridge was closed in August, we closed the bridge to traffic because of the condition of these piles, and there's several of them in that condition. So what we've done, we've done evaluation on trying to bring the bridge back into service, looking at doing some temporary service and looking at long-term replacement of the bridge. With the evaluation is complete, we're actually looking to go out and get temporary repair on that west bent to bring the bridge back into service for the remainder of the year, and then complete design for replacing the box with, probably either replacing, replacing the bridge, excuse me, with either a box or another bridge structure, depending on the cost effectiveness of that. And then, but we anticipate, we'd look at future budget number to do the replacement. Here's the information we've highlighted on the temporary repair, it's going to be about $50,000 in cost in making the temporary repair on the bridge. It would take about eight weeks, three weeks for construction, for contracting, administration of that process, which is just now, which has started, we've got the design pretty in place, and we're starting to get quotes now, and then probably about five weeks to get it repaired and then placed, at about a $50,000 cost. The repair work, which would consist of putting a new pile, steel piles on both sides of the bridge, and probably coupling it through the deck and inside, and then running a new beam across to support the existing deck, because the existing deck's in good, in good condition, that would be the repair, be done for about $50,000, and in its timeframe, the repair would be good for 10 years, probably plus, I mean, if you could compare. The problem is, we have the east, the east abutment or the east end of the bridge, which will be, is deteriorating, and unknown how long that will last, so we certainly think a full replacement would be necessary in the near future. We've done, we're doing design work for the, design work to do the engineering to replace the structures estimated in the $25,000 to $49,000 range, and then eight weeks for design, and about 12 weeks to replace it with a permanent structure, and the cost, based on other projects that are out there, could be from, you know, the little $50 to a little maybe $75, depending on the box, if it's a box or steel bridge, and what we can get the final bids for. But we could have the design in place, and it could be ready to go for construction as early as this summer when the school system is out, so we plan to put it back into, into use and have it open, and then look at some future date for construction, that would depend on funding, of course. So right now, where we're at is temporary repairs are being, being sought at at this time, and so we should in about eight weeks have that bridge back open, and we're proceeding with design and replacement of the structure, but the actual replacement would depend on future, when future funding is available. But we think the temporary repairs will certainly provide a life of that vent or that bridge for a number of years in the future, however, we probably will replace it as soon as funding is available.
If we built a new bridge, Robert, how long would it be expected to last?
Concrete, concrete structure, or either structure would probably have about a 50-year life. Design life, about 50 years, you probably could get a little better than that, but the design life on a concrete structure would be 50 years.
How, how long a bridge is it?
This is 30, about 30 feet in length, and, yeah, it's 30 feet long in length, and 20, about that in width, 28 feet, I think, but the length, the span is 30 feet on, I think 31 feet, actually, on this deck.
Robert, do any of the wind structure parts move along a little?
They do not move along, well, this is, this roadway is not adequate to carry heavy truckloads, only light truckloads, we'll go back and mention that. The temporary repair would bring the deck back into its existing service, but it would be for non-heavy traffic, large trucks.
Do we please that?
But, but, but not for heavy trucks, no, they do not use it, and it's, it is not a truck routing, it's not, it's not, has, does not have the capacity to carry trucks. Now, when we replace the structure with a new structure, it would have full load capacity to carry heavy trucks and all of the fire department, fire department equipment, as we, as we build it, replace it. That's another reason to consider an early replacement, is to bring, to allow that road to be brought back into the truck route system. But at this point, we are proceeding with temporary repairs, and proceeding with design on permanent repairs, and we'll come back in the future with more, better information on the actual costs for funding options for replacement.
Has there been any thought towards either why it was such a rapid degradation, degradation from the last time it was looked at, or whether or not it wasn't looked at thoroughly the first time? Because there's, I've gotten several complaints about the fact that it was said, it said it was good, we repaired it and invested money into it, and now it looks like we're going to have to...
Yeah, because it's, it went down substantially over the last year, I mean, the bridge was inspected two years ago, and did these problems, weren't noticed, and we inspected, we did network a year ago. It, I believe these, it's hard to say, but I believe these areas were underwater and just weren't picked up, and partly, mainly because they're underwater, they deteriorate at a faster rate, too. But yeah, that's, I think the inspection before these were, were just out of sight and weren't picked up, and, but through our bi-annual bridge inspection program, which is a detailed bridge inspection, they picked up in this fall, and August they picked up and that's, we're closing.
Seems like if it's underwater, you reschedule the inspection for a time when it's not underwater, so you...
Well, we...
hindsight's 20/20, I know.
Yeah, you're right. And we were encouraged to get the bridge back into service at the time, but that's why we made, came back, was inspected again this year. Good point. So, that's our plan, proceed, get it back to service as possible, and then get the plant built, get plants placed to replace it, and then based on funding, and hopefully we can replace it during some school vacation time, or this year, or some future year, and so not to, to limit our impact on the school system.
School vacation next summer?
Could be, yes, through the, the next, next summer, if the funds are available, if not, it would be whenever the funds become available, but we try to schedule it. I think we'd want to schedule a replacement due in the summer when the school's out, I think it'd be, help the school system out tremendously.
Any other questions? Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Item four, discuss street striping and parking schedule.
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, we have Frank Sweet here from Technical Services Department, and he's going to go over our paint strapping program and our thermoplastic on our intersections and stuff, and this is Frank from Technical Services.
Okay, let's see, I know how to use this. Got it. This is our new paint truck, it was purchased end of last year, we, it arrived early spring this year. We did a lot of modifications to it, it didn't come with a, over the, on the backside, is there a laser on this, like, out there? That's where the painter sits, and it didn't come with a, with a roof to keep the sun off them, so we built the roof on that. It comes with a container right here with oil, we put oil in there, and we spray down the equipment right here so the paint don't stick to it. There's two vats in this area right here, one yellow, one white. There's a glass bead container here to where as the paint comes out, we put a thin layer of glass beads for the reflective on the strip and the stuff. This is where the driver sits, and right here is going to be the front. So what happens is whenever the person is in there, we unfold this, stick it out, and the driver usually rolls this wheel over the line that's being painted. And they, we try to maintain five miles per hour, at a certain five miles per hour, you'll get the certain width that we need, which is four inches, and the certain, the mill thickness that we need. Maintaining it five miles per hour is, is quite a challenge when you're trying to maintain a straight line and five miles an hour, so there's a lot to, lots going on for the driver. And then they've got to, this is where the painter sits, he has a steering wheel, this here pops down and can actually come out and follow the line as the driver's following it, so if the driver gets off a little bit, they can correct it by moving the paint machine over this area right here, over. The controls are right here that does the different kinds of sprays, whether it's a solid yellow, striped yellow, striped white, or solid white lines for the edge. There's a total, 240 line miles, that's including the double yellow lines to the white edge lines, that's not a total 240 miles of street, it's just if you added the two edge lines and the, and the solid yellow lines, it adds up to 240 miles. How many miles have we been painting this year of the machine? Well, I've already went over that there, but there's been over 22.27 miles painted this year, we purchased 1,650 gallons of yellow and 1,320 gallons of white, they come in 55 gallon barrels. And then, of course, there's a thin layer of beads that is added to the paint as it's being put down. The type of paint that's being used is a low-temper, fast-drying waterborne traffic paint, it's acrylic base, performs equally on asphalt or concrete. Paint available is in five gallon, 55 gallon, and 275 gallon totes.
What is a tote?
The tote, it's the big plastic with the little metal guard, it's, it's a lot bigger than the drum. We don't do the totes, we have no way of mixing it. The gallon drum, we built the container that goes on top with a drill that can mix it before we put it into the truck. The five gallon pails come with our little paint machine, it's made for that. Now, the drums are what we bought more of, and those are prices right there, and then the, when the glass beads are applied to it, you get less than two minutes of dry time, so I mean, pretty much after two minutes, you can drive on, it won't make marks across the road. Applied between the 35 and 110 degrees, and that's with, if it's 35 degrees outside, and that's got to be rising, so if you notice when it gets colder that day, and it's 35, you don't want to paint, it's got to be 35 degrees and rising. One gallon yields 300, 320 feet on a four inch stripe with a 15 inch mill thickness. This was Woodring, just south of the new county road they put, that they're overlaying, we did our little section there, just that one mile section alone, there's over 7,000 feet of yellow and 7,000 feet of white. This is the video, it in action right now. You see that little white area, that's the glass beads being, being put down right after My heel getting up past that.
Is there a lot of maintenance now?
Yes, as the truck sits, you want to, we want to, once a week, we will start the paint and stuff. There's a lot of places you want to grease, especially in the mechanical area that the paint, where the paint comes out and stuff. And this is the machine-applied thermoplastic, which is another machine we have, the line which are four and 12 inch. The machine is best used for straight lines such as stop bars and crosswalks. Tech Services has built a preheat box to help the process go faster, the preheat box keeps the thermoplastic hot and in a melted state at 400 degrees, it also has an agitator to keep it mixed up. When the thermoplastic machine runs out, the material can easily roll over to the box, get another refill, and then as it's going back out to work, the preheat box, you can throw a couple more bags into it, the whole bag and all, even the plastic container that goes around the thermoplastic, it all melts down, it's, you're good to use it that way. It does take approximately two hours to get everything kind of heated up and, and to a melted state, of course, always depends on ambient temperature, the cooler it is outside, the longer it takes. And that there is the, the machine, thermoplastic machine, right here is the propane tank, this right here is the vat that we keep it in, this little arm right here, you manually push it forward and back to help agitate, keep it all mixed up. Right here's where the glass beads go, so as it's being, as it's being applied right here, the glass beads will come out and drop down on top of the thermoplastic. This is the preheat box that was built by Tech Services, a lot of work went into this, so as the, as this right here runs, this right here is a big gear, there's an agitator inside, so it runs around, it's all ran by generic, because there's actually a motor on the backside of this, and the thermoplastic machine would pull up right here with a tray, and you open this up, and you fill up the thermoplastic machine right here, right off the back. And this is the total count of preformed arrows and combos, which is kind of the way I want to go on this, thermoplastic arrows is 290, and you can see me, we have the left arrows throughout the city, the right arrow is straight, left combo and right combo arrows. Downtown and as needed by intersection using preformed arrows, the arrows being applied right here, the preformed arrows come in a box, you kind of put together as a puzzle, and you can heat it up, and it melts, and it adheres to whatever surface you want to put it on. There's a six to eight times length that it lasts longer than paint, the beads, the glass beads for the reflectivity is throughout the whole substance, so as it wears, you still get that reflectivity. Our machine, it only puts on top, so as the beads wear and are gone, you lose that. Downtown alone has 27 preformed arrows, including all of those directions right there, also the crosswalk and stop bars, there's 921 crosswalk bars throughout downtown alone, and then 83 stop bars, and a total cost of downtown project, including the arrows, is about $20,000 just to get the downtown arrow done, or the arrows and the stop bars and crosswalks. There are 48 intersections total, the price by, price per intersection ranges from the 218, which is strictly just two arrows, all the way to the highest, which is the $7,043, the one pretty much down Willow Street. If you notice in the middle of Willow Street, there's no left turn, right turn arrows in the middle, that's where that price comes from, because that's probably 20, 30 arrows just right there in that mile section.
Are these 48 arrows you're talking about, are they just in the downtown area, that's not citywide?
There's 27 preformed arrows in the downtown, there are 48 intersections.
Citywide?
Yeah, citywide, some intersections may have two arrows, some might have 15 or 20, just depends on, you know, what kind of arrows, whether it's a two-lane, and there's various, there's different intersection, different sizes arrows, or different amounts of arrows.
How many employees are working on this?
Three.
Three?
Yeah, and you pretty much need three, but, because you need one to drive the truck, one to drive the preheat machine, one also to help direct traffic. The pre, the thermoplastic machine is pretty heavy, so I mean, one guy can get pretty tired trying to move it back and forth, and the arrows really, within 30 minutes, this, we had a guy come out and demo an arrow for us, and that's why you see them here, really, after you get the, the ground done, set up, ready to go, cleaned up, which on concrete, you want to grind away the old paint or thermoplastic, and you got to put down a, you got to apply a sealer to help it stick to it. On asphalt, you can do it two ways, you can either grind off the arrow, or you can heat up the top of the old thermoplastic, scrape off the top, and put the new arrow down. Either way, it's going to work really well. 30 minutes is about how long it took to do one arrow, a lot quicker. And then you need to plug with schools, crosswalks, and stop bars, these are the different numbers of stop bars, and then you got number of crosswalk bars, and then horizontal crosswalks, and a total of about 275 bags of thermoplastic billet duties, and that's what we're going to be planning on doing next year, before, before end of, before the school year starts next year, we'll, we'll hopefully have all the schools done, we've already got five out of 17 done this year, so we'll, that's our plan there. This is the plan, every Thursday, weather permitted, since August 1st, we've been going out, three-man crew, painting the streets, and then, and the streets as needed, there are two needed for the paint truck, of course, you got, and of course, you got the driver and the painter, then you got the third guy, which is, drives the truck for a spotter, so as you're going into the intersection, you don't want to stop, so you got to have a guy out in front to help block traffic so you can keep going out there, because you got a 15, 15-foot guide that sticks out in front of your truck, and the painter's way back here, so that's why we need that third guy. Same thing for the thermoplastic, you really want three people on that, too, one to help drive traffic, the other ones to help keep preheat machine going, and one to do the thermoplastic The third line out there, we'll work, I needed, intersect, or as needed intersections, to get them completed with new arrows and fresh crosswalk and stop bars, weather permitting, of course, if it gets too cold out there on the, on the thermoplastic, if it's 50 degrees of blow, you don't really want to do thermoplastic, because you don't want to put 400-degree thermoplastic down, less than 50 degrees, because it'll flash, and it'll start cracking up, it'll break, it won't last nearly as long, so the prep work is really the key on this. The downtown parking stalls are on the list, and we're going to look at getting those done next, start on next year, after the school crosswalks are done. Any questions?
Yes, it, are we, are we working on the, the intersections where the striping for the stop line and, and on the intersection?
That is the plans, I have each intersection broke down as how much it costs to do the arrows, so we get new arrows, and then the thermoplastic machine, we'll do the stop bars and the crosswalks and the arrows per intersection, try to get the whole way.
Of course, a lot of them don't have arrows, I mean, a lot of them...
Yeah, some of them don't have arrows, some do, that's just a plan we're trying to get started on, to start working on, we're going to start going to a three-day, until it starts getting really cold, try to do three days a week to get the guys out there to start getting intersection. The first intersection we're starting on is a...
South Gate.
South Gate, yeah, South Gate and Van Buren, and going into Vance Air Force Base, I know there were some arrows that weren't out there, we did put one down about a month ago, that was another test one, the guy let me have and test it out, we're going to begin that one done probably within next week, I already have the stuff ordered, it was on its way two weeks ago.
How many intersections can you do in a day?
Well, a lot of the intersections, we will have to have a crew go out before us to help grind off and clean the, because you want to clean off as much, to make them last as long as we can, we got to clean off the old stuff, so that's...
A lot of them that I've seen, you know, whatever was there is long gone.
Yeah, it's, it's gone, but if it was painted, you would definitely get the paint off, because if the paint starts flaking, then your thermoplastic won't stick either. So it's a, get someone out there to do that, and they'll come in right behind, about 30 minutes, 30 minutes about per arrow, but the thermoplastic machine itself takes a little longer, because you got to heat it up, keep it heated up, and actually move it around and stuff, so the crossbars are, is two foot wide by seven foot long, so on a 12-inch die, you got to make two passes, so that takes a little bit of time there, and then the same thing with the stop bars.
So...
You have to do two part.
So how many do you think you can do in a day?
We'd probably get two intersections done a week.
A week?
Probably, that's, that's kind of my guess, I mean, that's, that's cleaning up the intersection with grinding off the old and come back in and put the new.
Where did you start doing the striping?
The striping of the painting, we started that probably April, we started just going out there, and we just was getting a lot of the major streets that needed it done, so we were kind of all over the place, and then we're going to start going back to start doing one street from end to end, you know, and the paint lasting from six to eight months is how long the paint lasts.
On your priority list, how many years do you expect to get all of it done?
I haven't, probably two years, I mean...
A lot of people waiting on you.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're just, we're, we just got the paint machine, the thermoplastic machine we've had a little bit, intersection will take a while, we want to do the intersection in thermoplastic, it lasts six to eight times longer, so we look at two to three years for that. The painting is one that needs to be done probably once a year at least, you know, to get everything done, probably two years, three years.
Yeah, and the paint, the paint does not last as long as you may notice, because we have been, we have painted some streets that I know of, such as Willow between Van Buren and Cleveland, twice, at least since we've had the machine, so you, the public hopefully has seen a significant improvement, especially in the arterial areas with street painting. What I think is lacking right now is the intersection work that Frank's talking about, so that is really going to be our focus for the next six weeks, month and a half, two months, however long we have good weather pushing into next year, and then obviously, probably because of the weather, we won't be able to do much probably in January and February, and then we'll pick up again and finish those 48 intersections, then move to the downtown and the schools, and then probably paint lines again as needed. So I don't know if we answered your question, Mr. Mayor.
And that 48 intersections, including all the ones downtown?
Can you do the grinding during the winter months?
Yeah, but then you leave no stop bars or crosswalks, I'm hoping I'll leave about a day gap there without, I have any stop bars and arrows, that's why we get a crew in there to, you know, grind it one day, we can come back and they stay one step ahead of us, I think it'll work better, we don't want to go too long without any, anything there, any markings.
Well, one of my concerns is, and I know we talked about this early on, is that we're, we're so far behind on doing any striping, that we, I know at one point we're talking about getting a contractor in here to do some work for us.
I think we've made significant improvements, I can tell you on a daily basis, I do not get phone calls about street painting now, in fact, I've had very positive comments, now that doesn't mean there's obviously lots of work to be done, South Gate is one I have heard complaints about at the intersections, that's why we're addressing that one with thermoplasty. Thermoplasty is an effort that's, that's been worked on while we've had the machine, or during and before, to improve, because we realized if we paint, we painted South Gate, the arrows, I know, probably this year, probably at least twice, I'm thinking, maybe three times, but because of the volume of traffic there, the paint doesn't last, so I'm very pleased with the solution we're, we're going to start rolling out with these thermoplastic arrows. Frank's talked about getting the prefab thermoplastic, because that's better, our machine, it'd take too long, we wouldn't be able to do a good job.
There's too much waste, and they won't look uniform, and also, like I said, the beads are throughout on the, on the preformed, on the ones that, when we use the thermoplastic machine, it's just a thin layer on top, so once those were... So once those are out, you lose that reflectivity.
So we are very committed to street painting, streets in general.
The one place that I've noticed that we really have a problem as far as the intersection marking is long, intersections on Gareet, because-
We talked about that.
Up and, up and down Gareet, especially around the mall and all those business intersections, uh, in, in many of them, you can't find the turn lane.
That's, I think that's ODOT. ODOT has a responsibility for the roads.
Well, I don't know whose responsibility that is.
But, uh, I know we were going to contact them and specifically ask them about that. The one example we do have of Van Buren that they did recently, they came back and did a lot of those arrows. Now, as you recall, it took ODOT a long time when they were going through that process, so, uh-
Cadaver and Van Gareet, those should be-
There's plenty of, I'm, I'm assuming we're probably going to have to address that, but I know we're, we're in contact with ODOT. We don't want to, if they want to do something, we want them to do it. If they, we'll do it timely. If they won't, I think we'll probably need to do it because of what you've said, Commissioner.
If you can do all that in two to three years, my hands off to you.
I know when it rains like Gareet, there's when you can't see anything.
Well, I, I, I think that if, you know, indicated on the, on the one thing that was sent out to us is that they were only working on Thursdays, one day a week.
Well, we started out working more often than that.
Yeah, I thought if you, if you're going to go one day a week, you're, you're never going to catch up, because one thing, you're going to have to go back and start over again.
Well, let me explain that, too. As you, as you recall, resources are limited. Resources and employees, and these say for employees do more than just-
That's why I suggested contractor. I mean, I think at some point, we're going to have to try and, and get ahead of the curve here, and then, then maybe, you know, I think probably the department can handle the, the maintenance, but I, I would like for us to consider that in our next budget process to see if we can't, uh, you know, see what, see what, I, I know it's expensive, because I remember what we paid those people that came in and put little bicycles down, yeah.
Natty Grand?
Yep.
Natty Grand would buy a lot of thermoplastic.
And they're pretty well gone, too.
Yeah, well, all, all the preformed, all the pre, preformed arrows that we do in the entire city comes up to thirty-two thousand. That's all new arrows. And the arrows, what you're asking, the arrows last, uh, I was told by the, the guy who, uh, put down that one, uh, demo for us, said three to four years. But when you start looking, it says six to eight times longer than the paint. Now, it all depends on how you put it down. If you clean the area really well, if it's on concrete, you put that, uh, that sealant down first, it's going to last a lot longer. I mean, you got to do your prep work to get the longevity out of your stuff.
We'll also be able to see, too, where we're at by next, but you're on this program. You see where we're at, if we want to go that route. I think we'll be way ahead of the game by then.
Okay, good.
And next year, I mean, if, if we can get, you know, we look, maybe talking about getting some, maybe temporary personnel, so we can kind of get them on there.
We're getting into the cold time of year, too. I didn't know what, whether you were able to do much during December.
We can do some painting, but the thermoplastic, less than fifty, I mean, it, I don't think it's, I mean, it, it doesn't recommend anything less than fifty.
That is on the ground temperature.
That's on the ground temperature, yes. And we have a laser gun that we usually, that we used last year that I remember. We check the ground temperature.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
And you will have lots of formulas before you get finished. Item five, discuss the ordinance reactivating Dr. Martin Luther King Holiday Commission.
Yeah, let me start out with that. This, this really came about because I had been asked some questions about, uh, well, Commissioner Morewood, you asked a question about why is the MLK Commission not listed in the budget book, for, for one thing? And that's because back in twenty-twelve, there were some board, uh, board size reductions and, and, and some, uh, deactivation, which meant that the board, in this case, the board, this board was deactivated, or I guess, I don't know what the proper term is, Carol can tell you, but it was, I guess deactivated as an official city board. It continued to operate as a board all that time, and the city supported it. Um, however, the questions come up about why isn't it listed in the book? Um, you know, why isn't it, uh, why aren't commissioners appointed to it? Well, commissioners aren't appointed to it anymore unless it's a, an official city board. So we started out looking at a resolution to, to do this, and we particularly talked about this at the last MLK meeting. And, um, and we determined for several reasons that maybe we just need to make it an ordinance. And Carol can talk about the ordinance, but one of the things that the commission spoke to me about at the last meeting was that another problem that we had with the commission, the way that it was constituted last time, was that there were specific requirements about who the people were that could be appointees. In other words, there was a appointee, I think, from Southern Heights, or an appointee from the school system, and appointees from the commission, appointees from other places. They had requested, and I think it's a good idea, to just leave those as at-large positions, and people that want to serve, and the people that you, as the commission, put on this, this committee, um, are, can, can fill the roles. Uh, the only thing Carol can talk about, she had a suggestion, I agreed with her, that, uh, I don't know that we had a Vance rep ever before.
Hit a light.
A Vance Air Force Base rep?
We did, Joe.
We did, okay. Um, and I don't know if you want to specify a Vance Air Force Base rep or not, but that's what we've done in this draft. So Carol, you want to talk about the draft?
Well, we just took, um, what had been in the resolution from nineteen ninety-nine, and then, um, there were some additions. I went ahead and put that it was a legitimate and important municipal purpose in the resolves, um, partially to, uh, assist, uh, our chief financial officer. One of the reasons why we decided to make it a ordinance is because, um, traditionally, the city has paid for the celebration, but there is a, uh, there's always been, um, uh-
Let me clarify.
Yeah.
And we've got some people that have been on the commission a lot longer than I have. The city recently has paid for things like the use of the center.
Yeah.
The committee itself has solicited donations from the public, and in the past, until just, I think, last year, it had been held in local churches-
Okay.
-around town, so, uh, what this, but there is a specific bank account, uh, that, uh, with donations.
Yeah.
And because of that, we're thinking this is the best way to-
Yeah. They, I know from the past that they get donations from different civic organizations, churches, and just individuals. And that there is a, uh, annual scholarship and then awards for, um, students and stuff, uh, for, uh, the prizes for contests. And, um, there was concern about, um, audit situations, you know, what the auditors would think. So by putting, um, I put in one that one of the duties is to promote education and collect donations for the scholarship and to provide prizes. Uh, and that, um, they would collect donations for that, and that we would have an account that would be for that purpose. Now, if the city, I mean, a couple, for a couple of years, the city has helped with, uh, having it at the center and, um, having a dinner, um, the, this account would be just for the, um, collection of the donations and to facilitate the, giving the money for the scholarship and the prizes. And, um, Aaron, uh, th- this is what we did for the, um, art, art, um, the public art account. And by having it in an ordinance, it, it makes it more of a government purpose, and the accountant should be happy, or the auditors should be happy. So we've, but basically, this is, other than that one paragraph about the collecting of donations and the account, this is pretty much what the resolution had before.
The committee, I believe, is still comprised of eleven people, isn't it?
Yes.
And has been, so that doesn't change under this. Right there, it talks about there will be a member, the mayor and board commissioners appointed, a rep from Vance Air Force Base, and nine at-large members. My intent was to bring this tonight, get the feedback from the commission, and then, uh, the MLK Holiday Commission's having a meeting on the twenty-sixth, I think, and they can weigh in with their input on what they think, what they would like to have with this. And then I'd like to bring it back on eleven-seventh to have it approved.
Well, my, my only concern in reading through the ordinance was it didn't stipulate any specific number of meetings that need to be held. And, and I, I don't know, I think there needs to be at least a minimum number of meetings stipulated. Otherwise, you know, how, how well is it going to function?
Well, I believe that they've always had-
There's a meeting every month.
We, we do, we take a break in, um, June and July, and those are the only two months that we haven't had a meeting.
Oh, well, the ordinance indicated just meetings as called or something. It didn't stipulate a monthly meeting or anything.
Yes, that's what it's always said, but, um, that, I think traditionally, or at least early on, there's more meetings when it gets closer to the celebration. So sometimes, in some years, there've been meetings every two weeks-
Yeah.
-towards the, the, um, the celebration, and then-
Well, the only, the only reason I brought that up is, you know, to people, when you're asking people to volunteer to serve on a board-
Right.
-frequently, they want to have some idea of how often they're going to have to show up for a meeting.
In general, there's a meeting once a month.
Okay.
The third, was it Tuesday or Thursday? Two, okay, the third, the third Thursday of each month. And I'm already on the board. I was president of that board for five years. I'm still there. I've been on the board for, I believe, ten years now.
You should know how it works.
Oh, yeah. So there's a meeting run every, uh, third Thursday of each month. And like Carol has said, sometimes there's two or three or four meetings-
When you're judging.
-when it gets closer to the celebration.
I don't know if you want to tie it down that, that close to the third Thursday of every, you know?
No, but I, you know, it's stipulated a monthly meeting is, you know, but, but, because, you know, we, we have had, it doesn't happen very often, but every once in a while, if we, uh, have volunteers for these boards, uh, they'll get up, they'll come to the meetings and want to ask us all sorts of questions about the specifics of what their responsibilities are and whatnot.
Well, we can, we can say that, that it'll hold meetings monthly and as required by the present business. Uh, then, um, but no one is gonna, I mean, if there's a decision that June and August, there's not going to be a meeting, um, you just give your, your-
Meetings at the call of the chairman, like, at least quarterly or something.
Okay.
Just to show that there's continuing interest.
So we like at least quarterly, and then-
Yeah, and then they can do it as much, more often.
Does that sound, is that?
Yeah. Sounds great to me.
Okay.
Well, what will probably need to happen is, just like every other city commission now, by December fifteenth, a list, there'll need to be a list of the meetings for next year. So probably one of the things on the agenda item for the meeting in November may need to be, figure out the list of meetings for the next year.
Right. And Stephanie, she does that, I'm sorry, Mayor, she does that already.
Yeah.
There's a list of meetings that she gives out by, uh, email and, uh, hard copy. Uh, every year, she gives it to us, so that's already in.
So, so that's a good point. Really, this just makes it, it puts it in the city code, and makes it official city commission. Very good. Any other questions? Carol, anything else?
I do like the Vance representative. I like having the language in there. I mean, we pride ourselves on the closeness that our community has with the base, and I think that's, that, I don't know.
I'm glad you brought that out, uh, because there's a colonel that speaks every year.
Yeah.
Every year, we have a colonel that speaks. There's great involvement from the base.
I don't think that'd be a problem.
And the mayor's there every year.
Yeah.
I'm not sure he's, I'm not sure he's speaking. I was going to say, on that note, one of the objectives of the committee is to increase attendance and, uh, membership. So everybody's welcome, uh, it's till January thirteenth, is that a Saturday, I think?
Yes.
Three o'clock is the march, four o'clock is the, is the event, and by five-thirty, I think we-
Uh, we're celebrating on the thirteenth.
It would be, uh, it would generally-
I can change it.
Yeah.
Very good. Item six, discuss the new CDVG funding committee process.
Yeah, Stephanie will talk about this, but, um, Commissioner Morewood, Commissioner Jansen, you'd asked me to look at bringing back the CDVG funding-
Okay.
-committee process. And I think that's a good idea for you. It doesn't take away the ability of the commission to set the priorities or how the money will be spent, but what it does is create the separate committee of citizens that looks at the, uh, projects that are based on the priorities you want, can put out the RFPs, listen to the presentations, and make recommendations to you. So that's what Stephanie would like to discuss with you, and we'd like to hear your input on what you would, if you like that or not.
Basically, it would be the same process as it was before, if you remember how that process worked. Um, you will, you will have the opportunity to come to, um, meetings and roundtable meetings, uh, stakeholder meetings such, uh, to hear presentations that aren't in conjunction with the commission meeting, making those last until ten-thirty. They could be separate. Um, in years past, we've had twenty, thirty applicants when we had more funding. Um, so sometimes those would be done over a two-day, two-evening process from about six to ten. Um, but like I said, right now, we don't have as much funding as we did before. But the five-year consolidated process is coming up. Those meetings will start in December, and that's where you and community members at a public hearing will decide what the priorities are. Um, they give you input, you come up with the three or five, um, areas that you want to see CDVG funding toward. After that, then it's simple, you do the RFP process like we did on the after-school youth programs. So if you did that program again, and you did, um, you know, an infrastructure, then you could hear projects from, um, the city that, we have a CIP list, and you can go through that and say, these are the ones we want to see funded. Uh, the funding committee can go through all of those and then report to you. Um, so it'll just be like it was before. Nothing has changed in this new resolution. Except for two commissioners. It used to be one on the funding committee, but we've changed it to where two. That way, you two can go back and speak to the, the group and-
Do, do we stipulate any other members on that committee?
Uh, the other members are, I don't know, you just decide they're all at-large.
So what's the magic formula that's going to make this work this time when it weren't the worst? Because I'm not going to support bringing it back. I won't, I won't do that, just so you guys know.
Well, hon- honestly, you know, to me, it, we, it involved a lot less of our time. You know, we, we have, we had, this year, we had several marathon meetings. We got to sit there and listen to all these long-winded presentations.
It's okay.
And I, I would just prefer that, uh, the commission, you know, our committee handle that and, and make a recommendation to us. And as long as we don't get too carried away and ignore everything the committee comes back to us and recommends, then I, I think it'll work well.
I agree. Because I think we need, like you said, to be present so that there'd be a form of accountability. And, you know, um, we would be able to cut down on a lot of the confusion and a lot of the time, because Stephanie already has the groundwork set up. So all we have to do is just go in and make sure everything's been done right. I think it's a simple process.
I thought when we did the after-school stuff, I kind of liked that we had control over that from the beginning to the end. I liked being able to be part of that process from the whole thing, so that we could see it all and make a, a more informed decision. Because I don't feel like we get as much information when we're not part of that committee.
That's been my experience, too. As a matter of fact, when we have those committees, it's almost, it's, it's, again, it almost feels like it's a rubber stamp. Uh, that, that's the expectation, when they come in with their recommendation, that we go ahead and say, okay, good with that. Um, I didn't sign up for that.
That was one, I, I like to say, that was one of the problems before, and Tammy can elaborate, Commissioner's been here longer, is when we had the funding committee before, and they would bring in recommendations, it could be confusing sometimes, because there would be the recommendations of the funding committee. Sometimes the city would have slightly different recommendation. And then sometimes the city commission would, just like you said, Commissioner, not want to just, they, they might want to change something or tweak something. But one thing that's slightly different in this process than the way it was before is, or at least seems different, is I, I would still think through this process, whether you have this funding committee or not, you would determine what the priorities are going to be for the CDVG monies, whether it's infrastructure or youth programs or the other things that it allows, home, home repair and homeless- that HUD allows, home, home repair and homeless shelters, and you could determine that probably during the budget time, or whatever time's appropriate. And the CDBG funding committee within that could work within those priorities, like this year, we had, essentially, there was about $59,000 that you said you wanted to spend on youth programs, so that's the way it went, there were three applications.
One of the problems is you had eight to 10 different entities applying for the money. Sometimes it, well, it's gone down every year because of the federal funding, and if you had eighty, ninety thousand dollars, then you've got eight or 10 vying for that money. And to me, it got pushed up to the city council from the way we're recommending it to be, to work.
I believe that the city council...
You get eight or 10 in there, you don't get anything done, and it takes a long time.
I think, my opinion is, if we have two commissioners on that committee to be able to be present, to know what's really going on, that would be great, but then, when it comes to the financial side of it, making the decisions on where the money's going to go, I think collectively, we should all vote on that aspect of it, but I still think we should have at least two commissioners present at the meetings just to know what's going on so that we can come back to the rest of the commissioners, the mayor, and give a report.
And you could probably have up to three, right, Carol? If you chose to have three, because...
The more the better.
So, therefore, if some of you are really wanting to be involved in the process every step of the way, that would be the way to do it.
Well, you know, actually, in my three terms of serving on the commission, you know, covering 10 years, I, it worked well for most of that time, and the reason that it was changed was that we had several commissioners that didn't feel like, they felt like the city should spend all the money and not give any of it away to these city organizations. That was actually what they recommended. And, and I think to some extent, we did use a lot more of it on city projects than we used to, but I, I just like the idea better of having more people involved in the process and making, and not have quite so much of it just be city commission decision.
I don't think it was all, the change wasn't all made because we wanted it all spent on city projects, because I never cared if we gave it to other people. I just didn't think it was being done fairly amongst the people we were giving it to. And so, that was when, that was why I wanted the commission to be part of that decision, because I didn't like...
Well, we've always been part of the decision. I mean, it's always our final decision.
We look at it with a glance.
Yeah.
You've got the budget process?
Lots and lots of things.
Anyway, I...
You've got the budget process?
But listen, when we signed up for this, we knew it was going to take time.
And we were the ones who were voted to make these decisions, and so when we create these committees and then we appoint people to be on these committees, then the people who start making these recommendations and these considerations aren't the people, the people who the people voted in a position to make the decisions. We're here because they, we said we were willing to do this. So, I don't disagree with necessarily having certain committees for these things, but ultimately, as far as, as long as I get all of the information, regardless of what the recommendation is...
Right.
Then, then I'm fine, because I just don't want...
Filtering information.
I don't want it filtered. I want all of the information so I can make a completely informed decision. I don't like feeling like I'm only getting a piece and somebody's spoon-feeding me what they want me to do. I like that.
Right, in fact, Jonathan, I agree with you and Ron as well, and Tammy, because if we're on that board, we can get that information out to one another instantly. We don't have to wait until annually. We don't have to wait until one time a year, and then next thing you know, we have to put our heads together and try to figure it out, when we can all, down through the year, work together and supply that information. I think it'd make it a lot easier on us.
The meetings, typically for the funding committee, we have six in, in the year. Some of those are public hearings, and some are the ones where the, the entities come and speak like they did until 10:30. Some of those meetings, like I said, are roundtable meetings, there are six of those, so if you're willing to dedicate six more meetings to your meeting schedule, I think it would be fabulous either way if you guys were the funding committee. It'll, it'll work any way you decide, but, you know, some people don't care at times. They're like, it's just CDBG, and some people are like, it's CDBG, love it. So, either, whatever you guys...
What it really came down to this time, though, was even...
I don't love it, but I think it needs to be fair.
Even though we sat through, you know, the long-winded presentations, it still came down to having to go out and visit the organization to really figure out what was going on.
That's true.
And that, to me, is what I think some other group could do, but maybe not. You know, whatever the commission decides, it's not going to be a deal breaker for me one way or the other.
Well, you have, it is on the agenda tonight, so you can either table it, to advise and work on it, or you can vote it up or down, however you want to do it.
I'd kind of like to wait till Dana's here.
Item seven.
Hold on.
Discuss the agreement for assistance with animal control enforcement. Chief?
Mayor Commissioners, I'm hoping you got a chance to look at that. I was approached by Chief Dominic of the North Enid a couple of months ago. They've always been interested over the years to have us take over their animal control. They outsource it currently, and they don't feel like they're getting their money's worth, and I'll probably tend to agree with them. What we could do for them, and what they want us to do, would be to take over their animal control duties, so they wouldn't have to outsource, it'd be outsourcing, excuse me, forgot about that, outsourcing to us at a rate of about $3,600 a year. They would be, our animal control would respond to North Enid calls, and their police officers up there, we wouldn't do enforcement up there. We can't, we're not going to be going up there running dogs, running at-large tickets. That would be reported to their police, that's their, their job. Every month, we would bill them $300 a month, and any other expenditures, like euthanasia costs and things like any other vet costs for a North Enid dog, it would all be tracked, and I talked to our animal control guys, and they have no problem with it. We'd be taking over about, according to the figures that I have, about 900 more people and about 2.3 square miles of extra enforcement for $3,600 a year, and that's probably two big apartment complexes and housing issues. So, that's really pretty easy for us, and it gives them a good service, and, of course, we'd be compensated for it. It's a pretty easy deal. I talked to Bryce Kennedy, the legal counsel for North Enid. He worked with Carol, and we're in disagreement, and I'm good with him.
We have enough facility, like, room at our facility and all that stuff?
We do. Ever since we started full-time adoption coordinator and working with rescues, we have plenty of room. And we're really actually thinking that probably, you know, four or five calls a month, you know, and it's, it's going to be pretty simple. We'll have a lot more probably nuisance animals, you know, scum traps and things like that than we'll have, you know, domestic. And even court time, if our guys have to go to North Enid City Court, we're compensated for that, so, pretty easy deal.
Will they free up some employees by doing this?
Will.
Is it contract employees that do that, or do they have full-time employees?
No, we're full-time employees, we have five animal control officers. So, it's really not taking up any more, you know, 2.3 square miles and 900 more people by the latest demographics, so it's really, you know, it's not, it's not a real big money-making deal, but it's, it's a, you know, good thing to do for them, and we're capable of doing it.
I assume this will be on probably the next question.
Well, what, you talked about how many calls you thought might come per month. What happens if all of a sudden it triples? I mean, is there a out in there so that we can go back and renegotiate, or they can up? Just because last month we had three doesn't mean every month we're going to have three.
Right, right, and I'm going to assume that it probably would fluctuate in winter and summer times because of the nuisance animals. The agreement can be relooked at every year. It automatically, automatically renews, or we can opt out and probably renegotiate.
There's a 30-day notice.
Thirty-day notice, typical standard agreement.
Yeah.
I don't think that'll be a problem, but if it does, then we can address it.
Should be a win-win situation.
Pretty easy.
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, we're chasing trucks all over town.
You what?
We're chasing trucks all over town.
We will adjourn and meet upstairs at 6:30.
Thank you for joining us for the Enid City Commission Study Session. If you have any questions or comments, visit our website at enid.org.